Good evening, Thousand Oaks. Today is September 10th and it's September 9th, excuse me, and it's time to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for September 9th. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Number two, please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut absent. Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Link absent. Chair Lanson?
Here. Number four, tonight we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
Good evening, Thousand Oaks. Today is September 10th and it's September 9th, excuse me, and it's time to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for September 9th. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Number two, please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut absent. Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Link absent. Chair Lanson?
Here. Number four, tonight we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
Good evening. We have a supplemental packet that has been distributed to the Commission and posted, containing information on written correspondence from both staff and the public related to Item 7A.
Thank you. Looking at number four, I don't believe we have any... Sorry, number five, we have no public comments?
No.
We will skip that then and go to number six, which is the Consent Calendar. With the minutes for July 1st, 2024, Planning Commission meeting, do I have any comments from Commissioners or a motion? Commissioner McMahon?
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Commissioner Ferris? Okay. Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut and Vice Chair Link absent.
Thank you. We'll all go on to Item 7A now. Will the Clerk please open the public hearing?
Just one moment.
While she's doing that, I can take a moment and say congratulations to the City of Thousand Oaks for turning 60. I know how momentous that is because I myself just turned 60 a few months ago. So congratulations to our city for making it. With that...
Hearing having been advertised as required by law, hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A Municipal Code Amendment MCA 2023-70005 to amend Chapter 4 of Title IX of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to repeal Section 9-4.2521 regarding accessory dwelling units (ADUs) and junior accessory dwelling units (JADUs) and replace it with a new Article 45 to comply with new state laws while its carryout program implementation from the city's 2021-2029 housing element. Article 45 of Title IX, Chapter 4 creates new regulations dedicated to ADUs and JADUs and includes updates to the development standards and entitlement process for ADUs and JADUs and to find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15282H, Other Statutory Exemptions, and Public Resources Code, Section 21080.17, which specifically finds that SEQA does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by a city to implement the provisions of Section 65852.1 and 65852.2 of the California Government Code. Located citywide, the applicant is the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. I'm presenting on behalf of the staff is Associate Planner Angela Georgiev. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? The item before you is for a Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2023-70005, to update the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, more commonly referred to as the ADU ordinance. The request before you is to amend Title IX, Chapter 4 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by repealing Section 9-4.2521 regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and replacing it with a new Article 45 to comply with new state laws while its carryout program implementation from the city's 2021-2029 housing element. Article 45 of Title IX, Chapter 4 creates new regulations dedicated to ADUs and JADUs and includes updates to the development standards and entitlement processes for ADUs and JADUs and to find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15282H, Other Statutory Exemptions, and Public Resources Code, Section 21080.17, which specifically finds that SEQA does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by a city to implement the provisions of Section 65852.1 and 65852.2 of the California Government Code. Located citywide, the applicant is the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. I'm presenting on behalf of the staff is Associate Planner Angela Georgiev. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Perfect. The item before you is for a Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2023-70005, to update the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, more commonly referred to as the ADU ordinance. The request before you is to amend Title IX, Chapter 4 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by repealing Section 9-4.2521 regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and replacing it with a new Article 45 to comply with the new state law as well as to carryout program implementation from the city's 2021-2029 housing element. Article 45 of Title IX, Chapter 4 creates new regulations dedicated to ADUs and JADUs and includes updates to the development standards and entitlement processes for ADUs and JADUs. As most of us are aware, California is facing a severe housing crisis. Particularly, there is a shortage of affordable housing for lower and middle income earners. Our city's housing element identifies ADUs as an integral housing type to meet housing needs. The proposed amendment before you this evening will ensure that development standards are consistent with state law requirements. As you can see from the timeline on this slide, it has been over four years since we have updated the city's ordinance. State laws have been updated and our current ordinance is considered null and void. As you are all aware, our housing element was recently certified. In order for us to maintain our certification, implementation of its programs and goals must be completed. One of these important components is updating our ADU ordinance to be consistent with state law. As a refresher, there are several kinds of ADUs that we'll be going over this evening. The three types of ADUs are JADUs, which are junior accessory dwelling units, attached or converted ADUs, and detached ADUs. Applicants can propose ADUs through garage conversions, conversion of a portion of the existing residence, by attaching a new ADU to an existing residence, or by constructing a new detached ADU. A combination of both a JADU and an ADU can also be proposed. This slide helps to visualize the difference between an attached and an internal or converted ADU. I will be discussing these differences in more detail as we overview the proposed ordinance amendment, so keep these visuals in mind as we discuss development and objective design standards. The staff report went into more detail regarding all of the state law updates and the proposed changes that we are incorporating to comply. These are some of the more prominent changes that are proposed. The most controversial is the prevention of front setbacks that would prevent an 800 square foot ADU. Other changes involve entry, maximum height, and maximum size. With the mention of the front setbacks, as I was preparing for this evening's presentation, I realized that some of the language was admitted from the ordinance, from our final ordinance, and staff suggests that we add back in in Section 9-4.4506B2, the sentence "The front setback is the same as required for the primary dwelling," and then also in Section 9-4.4506C2, the same sentence "The front setback is the same as required for the primary dwelling." The most significant change in state law updates is that there now is a clear distinction between an ADU and/or a JADU application that follows a streamlined process and one that is reviewed according to the jurisdiction's ordinance as shown in the table on this slide. The state streamline process has specific limitations on square footage and height, ensuring that applications meet the streamline criteria. Projects under this process do not need to follow the city's objective design guidelines or their development standards. This does offer a faster and less restrictive approval path for homeowners who meet the criteria. The city's application process, if homeowners opt to take this path, their projects must adhere to the objective design standards and the development standards, which we will be going over in detail more later in this presentation. In return for meeting these stricter guidelines, homeowners are granted more flexibility in certain aspects of their projects, including additional square footage and height. Staff sees this as a way to ensure that new ADUs and/or JADUs have a positive contribution to the architectural character of our neighborhoods. Over the next few slides, I'm going to go over briefly some of the updates to the development standards. These development standards are written to adhere to state law, allow for additional design options for applicants, and to clear up vagueness in permit application processing. As we discussed with the proposed amendments based on state law, sanitation facilities can be shared with a primary residence with an internal connection. JADUs are commonly constructed through garage conversions. However, they can also be created by converting existing residential space. An exterior entrance must be provided for JADUs as well as efficiency kitchens. A property owner must maintain residency in the JADU or the primary dwelling. The floor plan example that you see on this slide is an illustration of an interior attached ADU on a second floor. The option of an attached or converted ADU gives an applicant the selection to construct up to an 850 square foot ADU or convert 50% of the existing dwelling. As I mentioned briefly earlier, staff receives over 100 ADU applications per year. With some of these applications, many creative designs are included. One of the common themes that we see are ways to attach a detached ADU to a primary, for example, a breezeway or a patio cover, etc. We have incorporated the development standards of a minimum of 10 feet of a wall connection to clear up some of these discrepancies with co-determinations. Please take note of the green section of this floor plan, which incorporates an interior stairway access on the second floor, as we will discuss this later in the presentation. As we covered earlier with the two application processes, the streamline process allows for a maximum of 800 square feet for a detached ADU with no setback restriction in the front of parcels. As you can see in this slide, the city's standards have included an increased allowance in square footage for more bedrooms and for parcels that are larger in size. With a selection of more square footage, an applicant would therefore adhere to the development standards as well as the objective design standards that I will be touching on over the next few slides. One of the biggest opportunities in the update to ADU state law is the encouragement of cities to adopt their own objective design standards. This is important because every community is not the same, and having these objective design standards will help with the selection of better design from homeowners and developers in the City of Thousand Oaks. With ADUs being processed ministerially, there are no public hearings or design reviews as part of the project review.
1521 regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, and replace it with a new Article 45 to comply with new state laws as well as carry out program implementation from the city's 2021-2029 housing element. Article 45 of Title IX, Chapter IV creates new regulations dedicated to ADUs and JADUs, and includes updates to the development standards and entitlement process for ADUs and JADUs, and to find that the project is categorically exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15282H, Other Statutory Exemptions, and Public Resources Code, Section 21080.17, which specifically finds that SEQA does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by a city to implement the provisions of Section 65852.1 and 65852.2 of the California Government Code. Located citywide, the applicant is the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. I'm presenting on behalf of the staff is Associate Planner Angela Georgiev. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? The item before you is for a municipal code amendment, MCA 2023-70005, to update the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, more commonly referred to as the ADU ordinance. The request before you is to amend Title IX, Chapter IV of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by repealing Section 9-4.2521 regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and replacing it with a new Article 45 to comply with the new state law as well as to carry out program implementation from the city's 2021 to 2029 housing element. Article 45 of Title IX, Chapter IV, creates new regulations dedicated to ADUs and JADUs, and includes updates to the development standards and entitlement processes for ADUs and JADUs. As most of us are aware, California is facing a severe housing crisis. Particularly, there is a shortage of affordable housing for lower and middle-income earners. Our city's housing element identifies ADUs as an integral housing type to meet housing needs. The proposed amendment before you this evening will ensure that development standards are consistent with state law requirements. As you can see from the timeline on this slide, it has been over four years since we have updated the city's ordinance. State laws have been updated, and our current ordinance is considered null and void. As you are all aware, our housing element was recently certified. In order for us to maintain our certification, implementation of its programs and goals must be completed. One of these important components is updating our ADU ordinance to be consistent with state law. As a refresher, there are several kinds of ADUs that we'll be going over this evening. The three types of ADUs are JADUs, which are junior accessory dwelling units, attached or converted ADUs, and detached ADUs. Applicants can propose ADUs through garage conversions, conversion of a portion of the existing residence, by attaching a new ADU to an existing residence, or by constructing a new detached ADU. A combination of both a JADU and an ADU can also be proposed. This slide helps to visualize the difference between an attached and an internal or converted ADU. I will be discussing these differences in more detail as we overview the proposed ordinance amendment, so keep these visuals in mind as we discuss development and objective design standards. The staff report went into more detail regarding all of the state law updates and the proposed changes that we are incorporating to comply. These are some of the more prominent changes that are proposed. The most controversial is the prevention of front setbacks that would prevent an 800-square-foot ADU. Other changes involve entry, maximum height, and maximum size. With the mention of the front setbacks, as I was preparing for this evening's presentation, I realized that some of the language was admitted from the ordinance, from our final ordinance, and staff suggests that we add back in in Section 9-4.4506B2, the sentence "The front setback is the same as required for the primary dwelling." And then also in Section 9-4.4506C2, the same sentence, "The front setback is the same as required for the primary dwelling." The most significant change in state law updates is that there now is a clear distinction between an ADU and/or a JADU application that follows a streamlined process and one that is reviewed according to the jurisdictions ordinance, as shown in the table on this slide. The state streamline process has specific limitations on square footage and height, ensuring that applications meet the streamlined criteria. Projects under this process do not need to follow the city's objective design guidelines or their development standards. This does offer a faster and less restrictive approval path for homeowners who meet the criteria. The city's application process, if homeowners opt to take this path, their projects must adhere to the objective design standards and the development standards, which we will be going over in detail more later in this presentation. In return for meeting these stricter guidelines, homeowners are granted more flexibility in certain aspects of their projects, including additional square footage and height. Staff sees this as a way to ensure that new ADUs and/or JADUs have a positive contribution to the architectural character of our neighborhoods. Over the next few slides, I'm going to go over briefly some of the updates to the development standards. These development standards are written to adhere to state law, allow for additional design options for applicants, and to clear up vagueness in permit application processing. As we discussed with the proposed amendments based on state law, sanitation facilities can be shared with a primary residence with an internal connection. JADUs are commonly constructed through garage conversions. However, they can also be created by converting existing residential space. An exterior entrance must be provided for JADUs as well as efficiency kitchens. A property owner must maintain residency in the JADU or the primary dwelling. The floor plan example that you see on this slide is an illustration of an interior attached ADU on a second floor. The option of an attached or converted ADU gives an applicant the selection to construct up to an 850-square-foot ADU or convert 50% of the existing dwelling. As I mentioned briefly earlier, staff receives over 100 ADU applications per year. With some of these applications, many creative designs are included. One of the common themes that we see are ways to attach a detached ADU to a primary. For example, a breezeway or a patio cover, et cetera. We have incorporated the development standards of a minimum of 10 feet of a wall connection to clear up some of these discrepancies with co-determinations. Please take note of the green section of this floor plan, which incorporates an interior stairway access on the second floor, as we will discuss this later in the presentation. As we covered earlier with the two application processes, the streamline process allows for a maximum of 800 square feet for a detached ADU, with no setback restriction in the front of parcels. As you can see in this slide, the city's standards have included an increased allowance in square footage for more bedrooms and for parcels that are larger in size. With a selection of more square footage, an applicant would therefore adhere to the development standards as well as the objective design standards that I will be touching on over the next few slides. One of the biggest opportunities in the update to ADU state law is the encouragement of cities to adopt their own objective design standards. This is important because every community is not the same, and having these objective design standards will help with the selection of better design from homeowners and developers in the City of Thousand Oaks. With ADUs being processed ministerially, there are no public hearings or design reviews as part of the project review. However, this does not mean that neighbors do not have concerns about how ADUs will affect their own property enjoyment. The common concern that we hear from constituents is concerns about privacy and neighborhood compatibility. With these concerns in mind, staff has developed objective design standards to address these. As you can see on this slide, staff is not allowing rooftop decks, and we are requesting that privacy glass be installed when windows are in direct view of neighboring dwellings. Staff understands that many of the detached ADUs now can be ordered from prefab companies. These options are getting more diverse as time goes on, and matching the materials and colors is still highly possible with a unit that is not a framed design. Continuing with the theme of privacy concerns, exterior stairs are not permitted with the ADUs and JADUs on the second floor. This objective design standard is intended to both protect privacy and to encourage better design. Remembering back to the similar second-story floor plan that we looked at a few slides ago, you can see in this photo how a side entry with a stairwell creates a better exterior design that is harmonious with the existing residence. Also, the second-story setback from the first floor plane is more visually pleasing than a typical boxed approach. The intent behind requiring pathways to ADUs and JADUs is both for safety and access. As mentioned previously, all ADUs and JADUs must provide a separate external access. The hope is that pathways will also create a sense of community and property enjoyment for residents renting units. Garage conversions are a common request to create both ADUs and JADUs. Often, project submittals include maintaining the garage door on the outside of the primary with a conversion. Staff has safety concerns about this approach. A garage door is symbolic to vehicle or storage space. With individuals and families living in converted space, the intention is for the space to visually reflect living space, especially for emergency responders such as fire, police, and medical. The example on this slide is actually a recent submittal to the City of Thousand Oaks. The architect has made an effort to incorporate the same materials, add windows, and a planner in front of the converted space. This is reflective of the objective standards that are included with this proposed amendment for the removal of the garage door, installation of doors and windows, and landscaping directly in front of the converted area. Updating the ADU ordinance is necessary to implement Program III of the housing element. Additionally, the general plan involves goals and policies that support the promotion of ADUs in the city. Specifically, Goal LU3 advocates for diverse housing types and housing for different life stages and incomes. The construction of ADUs supports the availability of affordable housing for all age groups and low- and middle-income families. Therefore, the adoption of the updated ADU ordinance is consistent with the general plan. The proposed updates to the ADU ordinance address inconsistencies between the city's local ADU and JADU development standards and the amended state ADU/JADU laws. Moreover, updating the ADU ordinance is essential for maintaining the city's housing element certification with HCD. The proposed ordinance update will support responsible development of new housing units, creating additional housing opportunities and diverse building types. This will help the city meet its regional housing needs allocation while establishing development standards that preserve and protect the character of existing residential neighborhoods and maintain as much local control as permitted under the law. It is staff's recommendation to find that the update of the city's ADU regulations is exempt from the requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15282H, Other Statutory Exemptions, and Public Resource Code, Section 21080.17, recommend to the city council adoption of the updated ADU ordinance in order to comply with the state law and implement the city's 2021 to 2029 housing element. One thing before we get to questions, we do have a little housekeeping item, which is a supplemental memo that you should have all received with your packets for this evening. The memo includes proposed revisions to the staff report, the municipal code amendments, Attachment Number Two, and the municipal code amendment with track changes for Attachment Number Three. So for the staff report, the proposed revisions are for, on page four, the first sentence and the first paragraph, which states the following table outlines the specific amendments made by AB. I believe I accidentally put 2,221, and I meant 221. So my apologies. And then also for, on page five, under the table, so it's under current ordinance and then maximum unit size attached. It states limits the size of attached ADUs to 50% of the primary residence or 800 square feet. It should be whichever is greater, not whichever is less. And we have received some public correspondence since the time the staff report was prepared as well. I received one phone call from a local Realtor who had questions regarding the updated ordinance. I answered his questions, and I also provided him a link to the hearing and also a link to sign up for a speaker card if he so wishes to speak. And for Attachment Number Two and Attachment Number Three for the municipal code updates, on, let's see here, it's page 15, Part Seven, the heading, which says Title IX, Chapter IV, Article 25, Section 9-4.2509A, predictions into required yards. It said "mended" instead of "amended" as follows. So just a little correction there for that. I wanted to let you guys know that staff is here and we're available for questions. Noel Duran, our Assistant City Attorney, he is attending via Zoom tonight, so if we need to address any questions there. And I understand this ordinance is a little complex. It's taken us a while to get through it and understand it ourselves, so we welcome any questions. Please let us know anything that we can clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Georgiev. Actually, I think it's the third time we've taken it up in the last few years. So yeah, it seems it's come a long way on the process. So let's go to Commissioner Questions. Commissioner McMahon.
I know that the public has a lot of questions if they're considering doing this. And so I was wondering if there's a very succinct place on the city website where they can go and get exactly what they can and cannot do?
Yeah, part of our implementation process for following what Program VIII for our housing element is to also update the website. We're going to also work on some materials and handouts for the public, too. So that is part of our process once the ordinance is updated.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you. Let me see. My first question was, I had offered it in writing, and you were kind enough to offer it in writing. I'm just wondering if you can help me understand verbally just some of it. So the first one was Section 66314C, which basically, this is where they give the local agencies the power to put these ordinances in place. And it says that the ordinances shall do all of the following. Section C talks about providing accessory dwelling, that accessory dwelling units do not exceed the allowable density for the lot upon which the accessory dwelling unit is located, and the accessory dwelling units are a residential use that is consistent with the existing general plan and zoning designations for the lot. I'm assuming it's to make sure that it's really clear. Approval of this and following this, it's all consistent with the general plan, and we're all good. I saw that it was like covered in other government code sections, and we are not putting it into our ordinance. I know you explained it to me. Can you explain it so that I think I might not have gotten all the details? But if you're all good with it, I would just like to understand why a section like that's not in the current ordinance.
Yes, I can try to answer that. I think we looked into that section, and we do agree. It's a little conflicting with another section that you pointed out as well. So at this time, we just, we prepared the ordinance as best that we think complies with state law and the recent changes to ADU. There definitely appears to be some inconsistency with some of the statutes that were just adopted in March of 2024. We are, however, required to submit our ordinance to HCD after adoption. If HCD has some additional questions, we will review and reply as appropriate.
Okay. I'm assuming we're probably good with that section, that we are finding that it's all consistent and everything like that, right? So I'm seeing nods, so I'll go with that.
Do you want Mr. Doran to comment on that as well? I mean, I know he's online, but I don't know if he was, he could address that as well, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add is that I don't think we necessarily need to place that exact language in our code. I mean, we're presenting proposed ordinance that we think complies with state law. I don't think we necessarily need to state everything that's in the state code. But yeah, we think that there are some inconsistencies out there, and what we've presented complies with state law, and we think it can be approved as drafted.
Okay. Again, the purpose of these are trying to get my sense of what I'm reading in consistency with state law as well. So thank you. Second question goes to, I did pose these questions about this weird area of attached ADUs on existing dwellings that are between 1,700 and 2,000 square feet. Depending upon the number of bedrooms that is being proposed, it would seem like there's a different limit on the maximum that we can have on that. And I saw that the wording of the local ordinance doesn't make that discrimination. I'm just wondering if you can opine on that? It feels like there's a section of 9-4.4506B1, which talks about attached, I don't know if I said detached before, but I meant attached, attached or converted ADUs that have to be, the maximum is 850 square feet or 50% of the dwelling size. It feels to me like that needs to be split up depending upon the number of bedrooms being proposed in the ADU. 850 seems to be appropriate for studios in one bedrooms. 1,000 seems to be what is required for more than one bedroom. And I wanted to know staff's sense of that.
Would you mind reminding me what section of the state law speaks to that exactly?
Yeah. So there's the section in 66321B, which talks about, hold on, let me just pull it up because I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly, which talks about, we can establish minimum and maximum sizes for ADUs. B says, you can, but you can't do these things. And it says, you can't set a maximum that's less than 850 square feet.
Yeah, I see the confusion with this section, and I've wrestled with this a lot as well. So if you notice here, it says, on number two, it says a maximum square footage requirement for either an attached or detached, right? And then it says, it goes on to say, accessory dwelling unit that is less than either of the following. So then it kind of points to either one of those two. So it is a little confusing. My decision was to go based on what other jurisdictions are interpreting it to as well. And like I said, with your other question, we will be submitting this to HCD, and they ultimately can let us know what their final interpretation of that is.
Okay. But if I may, Commissioner Ferris, I think what you're asking is, for clarity, you think it would be beneficial, at least for how you read it, to just add this second part of Government Code, Section 66321B2B, which just adds 1,000 square feet for more than one bedroom, right? Which is, again, we're writing this trying to be consistent with state law. So you just think that it would help in this section to add that section?
I do. In the fashion of where we're asking it to be applied in our current ordinance is 4506B1.
Understand.
If it were split as an A and a B, depending upon the number of units that is being proposed for that, then that would help us to clarify. Are we complying with 66321B2? Or, no, hold on. Yeah, B2 or B3? Because it says, we can't set a maximum that's less than 1,000 feet if it is more than one bedroom.
Correct. The way they wrote it was obviously a negative, negative, right? So.
Yeah.
And that's the struggle that I think staff is expressing is, we, I think we understand what you're saying. I think this is written for that purpose is to, again, lay out for the residents, this is what you can have.
Okay, so go through the new launch.
So staff will certainly consider what you're stating here. I think we might be able to add that one section. I think we're going to get into it with your additional questions that you might have regarding some of the other inconsistencies we see with this. So we might have to even factor those other inconsistencies in.
Not that this hasn't been a challenge for staff and everyone else. I'm just trying to identify those areas that it looked like it wasn't exactly meeting that. So based on that understanding, if you're able to provide your best sense of it after the end of the hearing, that'd be great. One question I did have was about the existing ordinance. And I know the existing ordinance, I think, is, it also has the symbol of language, which is it's 850 square feet or 50% of the existing dwelling, whichever is greater, right? That seems to me to indicate that there could be a 2,000-square-foot attached ADU onto a 4,000-square-foot existing home. Is that a correct reading of not only what was in the existing ordinance, but what is being planned with the current one?
Yeah, that is my interpretation as well, that it's saying the maximum, either 850 square feet or 50% of the existing dwelling.
Okay. I'm going to ask two more questions, and then this'll tie it up for me. One, can, because these are going to be ministerially approved and a variety of things. And I actually don't know the answer. I'm actually asking to try and understand it. Can someone come in and ask for an ADU, get a 2,000-square-foot thing approved, and then later on kind of undo the ADU-ness of it and say, we want that to just be my 2,000-square-foot addition to the home that I got ministerially approved?
So turn it into an SB.
Well, we try to stay out of the, what could happen, what potential violations could happen. But if that were to come to be, and someone did want to convert an ADU back to a single-family primary dwelling, then they would likely have to remove the extra kitchen that would be part of the AD unit in order to be considered a single-family residence again.
Are they able to add on to the house? I mean, they can add 2,000 square feet to the house if they wanted to.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, Commissioner Ferris, in the sense of, we've had examples here before where you, we have the two-story addition. You've seen those come before you where due to the additional size, it requires planning commission review, right? So I think there are situations of that nature or where a typical addition might encroach in an area where state law, under ADU law, would allow it because of the need for housing and this concept of the policies behind the ADU or JADU process. And that wouldn't necessarily happen if it was just an addition to someone's home because they're expanding it to a point where they don't have that state law backing them up to say, this is necessary because of the housing, right? So I understand your point. I'm not sure if staff's going to answer to that very interesting question about if they wanted to reverse it. I think we'd have to have our building code, I should say, our building official review it as well for anything that might have to be changed, like the kitchen, for example, or something of that nature.
Because that's the part I'm trying to think of. It's like, is there something we can put within the state law discretion? You're pointing out exactly what the concern was. There are actually two paths to get that thing. This would actually allow for one to be less burden, less open if the intent was to sort of undo it. I'm assuming they probably can't. There's probably something that would allow, but I don't know the answer to it. I think that's.
Correct. Because it's almost saying you have to run out your place for an ADU purpose, right? And I'm not sure we would be able to enforce such a thing.
Last thing. But last thing, last thing is, and again, this is whole, this whole, like, the envelopes of the maximum that state law is saying you, you can have maximums, but you can't have them less than this, the, the double negativeness of, of this whole thing, right? So for example, if we wanted to say, we can allow maximum sizes of ADUs to be 100% of the, of the dwelling unit, state law's saying, no, like, you can't do that. Like, that's, that's one of the things you can't do. But it could be lower than that if we wanted, if we wanted to have it as 40% or we wanted to have it as above a certain thing. Not, not that we're, not that I'm asking that we put our thing, you know, recommendations in place, but what is council's discretion with respect to their ability to set maximum? The recommendation is to have it at sort of the maximum allowable maximum that state law allows, but does the council have more discretion to, to decide what some of the larger potential ADUs could be? Seems like detached, there's, there's a pretty narrow range in which they, they need to be in. I'm thinking much more about the attached ones.
So you're bringing up the next question or the next concern that we've had with this process and, and that is, we've, and you've mentioned some of the state codes, right? And so for, for the audience, many of, of this ordinance that we're adopting tonight or that we're presenting tonight is from a new government code section that was adopted in March of this year. And it starts with 66310 and it goes on for a number of sections. And as we're going through this ordinance, I will state that even with these changes and the fact that we've been here three times with ADU changes over the years, which again demonstrates that the, the state recognizes and I think we had some information presented to us earlier that we've had over 100 applications for the ADUs this year alone. And it shows that, and the state recognizes again, that ADUs and JADUs are a, a very useful and it seems to be a very option that many people are using because of the cost, right? It's much lower than trying to build a new multifamily residence or something of that nature, a larger house, for example. So I think the state recognizes that and so now they're trying to make it even more enticing, right? To make it more available for individuals and so they're, they're creating new laws. And so with that, I will just state that, and again, I'm not sure you'll be surprised, but you see some inconsistencies. And one of them I'm going to mention is for, because you had these questions on the size, right? And it goes to, one of the code sections is 66314. And in that section, and forgive me for a second as I grab it. So in that section, you have section D4 and in there it says, it reads that if there is an existing primary dwelling, right? So you have a primary dwelling already built, right? The total floor area of an attached, again, attached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 50% of the existing primary dwelling. Okay. So now we know if we have a 2,000 square foot house, the max it would be is 1,000. If you have less than that, it would be less than that. That's according to this particular section. But as you pointed out earlier in another section, 66321, it says minimum that you have to allow is 1,000 square feet if it's more than one bedroom, right? So you had that inconsistency. The second section of D5, the total floor area for a detached accessory dwelling unit. So now we're talking about that attached one, shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. So you have this section in here, you have 66321, you have 66319, for example, and we're seeing these, some of these inconsistencies. What staff has done is looking at, I think Ms. George Jeff mentioned it earlier, she's looked at other agencies. She has, we've read the codes, Mr. Doran and, and the CDD team, of course, have worked on trying to create an ordinance that matches all these different sections and read them as we think is appropriate. What's going to happen is once council has a review of this ordinance and makes a decision on adoption, we actually under state law have to submit this ordinance back to HCD for review. And if HCD responds and provides those comments, we're going to respond to those comments and take action as we think appropriate for that. Again, we are, I think, are creating this very complex ordinance change based on what we receive here, knowing that there's some inconsistencies that they have there, right? And we've read the HCD guidelines, which were done before this new code was adopted. And again, even with that, we still have these inconsistencies. So to your point, I think, I think what we're going to say to you tonight is that we have created this ordinance, which is going to be, to the best that we can, be consistent with the law as we read it. We're going to have some of these interesting scenarios or hypotheticals that might come up and HCD certainly is going to have a right to review any agency's ADU ordinance. And if they want to provide comments, we will certainly entertain those comments and provide feedback as necessary.
Just kind of clarifying for me, one of the examples, which is really, if there were a 1,200 square foot house and they wanted to build a studio that was attached to you, 50% is 600 square feet? Wait a second, that's, that's, 850 square feet is actually more than 50 and those two specific state law, like, sections conflict.
Correct.
That's a clear example of.
Correct.
Of that one.
Correct.
Completely understand. I guess the only two things I, at that point would be, given that attached ADU-ness of more than one bedroom or something, is there clarity we can add if, if that's the intent on it? And the second thing would be to understand council's discretion beyond the, the 50% of dwelling envelope as to whether that's something they want to, to consider. They do have, it appears, given the, the way the language is, they have some discretion if they wanted to say, we don't want the ADUs to be, you know, 2,000 square feet or something like that, but.
Yeah, I'll let staff continue to chime in here, maybe Mr. Doran, if he, if he can answer that question specifically. I will say that in the past, when we were doing these ADU, we, there was a minimum of 800, right? And so again, now it's 850, right? And so we have adopted that. I think staff, I mean, I think city council could, if they wanted to, go above that, certainly, but not lower than 850, right? Based on what we read in the state law. And I think part of that is just going, again, to that purpose of, of are we trying to create additional units for people to live in? And that number seems to be the number that's, state has said, okay, this is the number we think makes sense for livable conditions and those sorts of things, right? But again, you made the point numerous times tonight, there is an inconsistency and we need to address that, or I think the state needs to address that and we're going to follow suit once we find that.
I appreciate you and everyone else's entertainment of my questions here. Thank you.
Actually, I don't think we're alone. I think lots of other cities are going through the same thing. I, I spent a few hours going through legislative authority, which is scintillating reading, by the way. And, and I think this, a lot of these issues are going to end up coming back and we'll probably be here a fourth time to probably revise some of these things. Because again, once we all submit things to HCD, they're probably going to see this as a consistent issue that they probably need to address. That's my, going back to a really basic question, just so I understand, you said privacy glass. What exactly is privacy glass?
Yes, I've looked into different kinds of privacy glass, did a lot of internet searching. And basically you can, there's different ways that you can do it. You can purchase the glass as is, that has privacy elements and you also can do like, kind of like an added film on later, like similar, similar to, you know, tenting your car windows. And so we just tried to put like a loose term in there of like 50%. So it's just keeping people from making eye contact directly with the neighbors, right? That was just sort of a common concern that we've heard from constituents that have called about different ADU applications is, you know, oh, these windows are now facing me and, or balcony and stairs, people are going to be on their balcony porch and looking into my yard. So that's why we decided to incorporate that in.
And I noticed looking our revised ordinance, I know that the state gave us the ability, but we're not including anything about selling ADUs, correct?
Correct.
I didn't think so, just wanted to make sure. And then lastly, and again, this is more of just a, following with Commissioner McMahon's comment, I know the website, hopefully whatever happens will be updated. Again, I don't know if this, something can be done, but I received a lot of comments and questions from HOA people trying to understand the laws, which of course are now potentially going to change again. If we start sticking with one type of, you know, material that's used, that's going to be very confusing. I don't know if we can add something to the, the page to the extent it happens that, you know, directs them to their HOA people or something. I think that's going to be another problem trying to, you know, make sure that that's subject, you know, HOAs are subject to this issue and exactly in what way, but that's just my two cents. Any other questions? More questions? Okay, I have no further questions at this point, so let's go on to public comment. I believe we have two. First in person is, all I have is John. So come down, give us your name, whatever portion of your name you'd like and city residents.
Say again?
Give us your name or whatever portion of your name you want to give.
My name's John.
And your city residents?
What?
And you have five minutes.
Okay, cool. How's everybody doing? Good briefing. And good questions, Commissioner Ferris. I have a question about the ADU law that we're, that we have in place and then the one that we're adopting here to change it. If I do stuff that is in the ADU law, but my deeds on my property say I can't do those things, can I still do those things on that deed that says it can't, that I can't?
So just give us your comments, we're not going to.
Yeah, that's basically it. It's a question, I understand you may not be able to answer that tonight, maybe it's something to look into because that's a, the, you know, like CCRs, the deed, it's on the deed. So that's all I wanted to say.
At, at some point after a public comment, the staff will have a chance to respond, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just thanks for what you all do and I appreciate you all. I know that, especially you guys, the staff and everybody, but yeah, I know that your job is not the easiest thing to do in the world, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But yeah, if you could find out the answer to that at some point, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom, it looks like we have Shane Dolgeroff.
Mr. Dolgeroff did not log on.
Then we do not have him on Zoom. All right, so at that point, I guess we'll go back to staff for any further comments based upon the public comments.
And that has been brought up by someone else recently, if whether or not a current deed restriction would supersede current state ADU law, something that we've been talking to the city attorneys about. And so I really don't have a direct answer for you right now, but I'd love to give you my business card and maybe we could talk a little bit more later about what your deed restriction is and, and coordinate with you and see what your end goal is too as well. That's.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions, staff? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up to commissioner comments or motion. I want everybody to raise their hand at the same time. Commissioner Ferris?
I'll, maybe, well, I should have asked maybe the city attorney, can it help?
Do you want me to reopen the public hearing?
For, for convenience sake, yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
We'll reopen the public hearing and go to Commissioner Ferris for questions.
Okay. I just want to gain city attorney's amenability to the potential split on that. If not, then I'm fine, but I would like at least some comments forwarded with, with respect to the, the city council review of that. I just wanted to kind of gain an understanding of how best to, that was the one tweak, I'm just kind of wondering if, if it's worthwhile, understanding that there are these inconsistencies and we're trying to do our best.
And I apologize, Commissioner Ferris, but are you talking about the, adding the 1,000 square feet issue?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I understand what you're saying.
4506B1 to be split into A and B for.
Understand.
Are you amenable, is staff amenable to that split as, as being part of the recommendation?
I see, I, I think in talking and looking at staff, I think we would consider that change just to be consistent with, as you, as you noted with the very inconsistent statutes here.
Part of it, I wanted to make sure I had that understanding before we go into the discussion.
And I do want to just remind the commissioners that we do have that additional information on 9-4.4506BNC or subsections BNC, as Ms. George Jeff mentioned earlier today. So to the extent a motion is made, we'd have to incorporate those changes. That is correct. All right, I will then reclose the public hearing and go back to Commissioner Ferris.
Thanks. I would be happy to go ahead and make a motion unless there is others that wanted to comment before. Okay. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution based on the findings contained therein. We find that the update to, of the city's ADU regulations is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15282H, other statutory exemptions, and Public Resources Code, section 21080 dot 17, which specifically finds that CEQA does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by a city to implement the provisions of section 65852.1 and 65852.2 of the California Government Code, and recommend that city council adoption of the updated ADU ordinance in order to comply with state law and implement the city's 2021 to 2029 housing element, such that the resolution, the ordinance is amended consistent with the changes offered by staff, both in the staff report and the supplemental packet, as well as the potential split for section, proposed section 9-4 dot 4506B1, to have an A and B for the different bedrooms as we had discussed during the public hearing.
Well done. That was like doing an escape room result there.
I will, I will ask city attorney if we feel like we got everything there.
I think you got it.
Okay.
Commissioner McMahon, any comments? I have none, so go ahead and, Madam Secretary, prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut and Vice Chair Link absent.
And there is no appeal period on a recommendation by the planning commission to the city council. So we go on to number eight, department reports, looks like there's none. Item nine, commissioner comments, is there any commissioner comments or AB 1234 reports? Commissioner Ferris?
Just only that in two days, this will be the 23rd anniversary of the 9/11 attack on our country and I think it's important that we consistently remember that as part of our history. It's a very personal thing for me, but just want to kind of make sure that we remember that and honor it on Wednesday.
I think we all remember exactly where we were in that moment. Thank you, I agree with you. Number 10, staff update, Ms. Mellicore, are there any follow-up items, announcements or upcoming issues?
Yeah, there will be on September 10th, tomorrow evening, there will be a public hearing on the CBDG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report on September 24th. There will be an appointment, an appointment to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy on the consent calendar. And then October 8th, there will be the accessory dwelling and ordinance update that you just considered tonight, this evening. Moving on to upcoming items for city council, for planning commission, there will be, there are some scheduled for the 23rd, there will be another code amendment, which is to implement the housing element and is for lot consolidation and also Senate Bill 35 process. On October 7th, there will be public hearings for Conejo Recreation and Park District items. The first item is a project to replace a building and renovating a baseball field, playgrounds, picnic areas and amphitheater, along other improvements at 1175 Hendricks Avenue. The second project is to expand a skate park facility at 190 North Reno Road and that's it.
With that, again, happy birthday, Thousand Oaks. This will conclude the planning commission meeting for tonight. The next one we're going to adjourn to is September 23rd, 2024.